This meeting is called to order. Would everyone please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its eternal and everlasting justice.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember DePantholius.
Here.
Councilmember Dill.
Here.
Councilmember Garrity.
Here.
Councilmember Habercorn.
Present.
Councilmember McWiggin.
Here.
Councilmember Owen.
Here.
Council President Johnston.
Here.
Also present is Mayor Tapp, Administrator Frost, City Clerk Keith, City Solicitor Smith, and our City Engineer Snyder. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted in City Hall and on the city's website, summers.gov.org. Welcome, everyone. First order of business, I need a 48-hour waiver to add the Resolution Number 220 to the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll add Resolution Number 220 to the agenda. I'm also going to move, in the interest of everyone's time, a few resolutions around. We're going to move up Resolution Number 206 and Number 218 to the top of the agenda. So could I have a motion to open for public comment on Resolutions Number 206 and Number 218 only?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on Resolutions Number 206 and 218.
Motion to close public portion on those resolutions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Resolution Number 206, please.
Resolution Number 206 of 2024, a resolution accepting the resignation of Councilmember Joseph McCary.
May I have a motion, please?
It's removed.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution Number 206 is adopted. Number 218, please.
Resolution Number 218 of 2024, a resolution recognizing the replacement to the position of Councilmember-at-Large for the City of Summers Point, namely Kirk Garrity.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Any comments?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. McGwigg.
I just wish to welcome Mr. Garrity to the City Council.
Thank you, Sean.
It's a...I've served with you before. It's wonderful to have you back. I look forward to your energy and enthusiasm. Thank you for stepping up.
Thanks for the kind words.
Council President, I'd like to also thank Mr. Garrity for stepping up. He's got a tremendous amount of years of experience and he'll add to this council. And I just appreciate what you've done for the city in the past and what you're obviously going to do for the city in the future.
Oh, thank you.
I'll also add, welcome back. You were here when I first got here and helped me out a lot. I look forward to working with you again.
Uh-uh. Never mind.
He was just gonna add, he's looking forward to the stories about the bowling alley.
Yeah. Only over a cocktail.
There you go.
Welcome back, pal.
What bowling alley?
Oh, thank you.
Movie theater.
Of course.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution Number 218 is adopted. We're gonna also...you want to do the proclamation now?
No, do the Maltese. Let's do Matt Barberi come up.
That...that's a...
No, it's just the President. He just wants to give an update.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. For the Boy Scouts. Right there, Matt Barberi, for the Maltese Cross.
Okay. We just have a...an update from our Boy Scout, Matt Barberi. He's going to give us an update on his project for the Maltese Cross.
Actually finished it.
Okay.
Two weeks ago.
Right.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Barnaby and I'm a Life Scout in Summers Point, Boy Scout Troop 55. I would like to thank Summers Point Fire Department and Summers Point City Council for allowing me and my troop to paint Maltese crosses in front of the fire hydrants at my Eagle Scout project. Eagle Scout projects are about project management. As a manager, I am tasked with getting all approvals, materials, and volunteers to set the project in motion. After speaking with Fire Chief Sweeney, he agreed to let...to the painting of the Maltese crosses in front of the fire hydrants on city streets. This project aids the Fire Department in locating the hydrants if there are cars parked on the streets. The firemen can locate the hydrants quickly. The project took place on August 17. We had five teams of scouts and leaders throughout the city, and we were able to complete the task in a few hours. We even had the Fire Department stop by on their way back from a fire. In closing, I would like to especially thank Steve Hartley, my project coach, and Councilman Sean McWiggin for all his help. Once again, thank you for providing me the opportunity to serve my community in the great city of Summers Point.
Thank you. Great project.
Thank you. Good stuff, Matt.
Absolutely.
Yes, very much.
Yeah, you know, when you drive down the street, and actually I have a fire hydrant in front of my house, well, cat corner of my house regardless, but as you're riding down the street, the first thing that you do see on the street is something big and white, you know, and it's the Maltese Cross. And I didn't know you were doing it. I'm thinking, man, I gotta go out and pick up trash again in front of my house, but no, it's not. You see that from so far away, and it's really gonna be so advantageous for our Fire Department, even though they know where the hydrants are, but they'll know exactly where they're at and how far they gotta park the trucks to be able to drag the hoses out. But I thought it was a great project, and thank you so much. I appreciate it. We all appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, next, Keith Davis, Esquire, is here to give us a presentation for a proposal for redevelopment at 90 Broadway.
Thank you, Council President, Mayor, members of council. Good evening. It's a tough act to follow. I'll try to do my best. We had an opportunity just over a month ago on behalf of Exxeler Building Solutions LLC, and John Wolfington and Dan Metzler are here on behalf of that company to meet with the Redevelopment Subcommittee to present a concept to redevelop 90 Broadway, which is a tract of real estate, as you know, located adjacent to Kennedy Park. It's developed right now with 18 residential units. They're somewhat old and out of character with the development pattern along Broadway, some deferred maintenance, to say the least. Our proposal, client's proposal, is to redevelop the site with 24 attached luxury townhome units that we submit will be a betterment to the city, take advantage of the waterfront location of the property in question, and be a betterment to the city of Summers Point. We were asked to make a presentation to council about the concept and then answer any questions you may have about it. At this point, it's very top line. We did submit a draft redevelopment plan to your legal counsel, and hopefully, if the members of City Council and the mayor like the concept that we're going to present to you tonight, we would like to move forward in working with your professionals on the details associated with a redevelopment plan to facilitate this project. I have three folks that I'm going to provide to council tonight for presentation purposes, Mr. Wolfington, who I mentioned, our project architect, Steve Fenwick, and our project engineer and planner, John Barnhart. I'd like to bring Mr. Wolfington forward first and have him tell you a little bit about his background in real estate development and what his goals are for this redevelopment project. John, would you come up? Could you just introduce yourself?
Yes. Hello, everyone. I'm John Wolfington. Great to meet people here that I've not met yet. I see people in the room. I've been doing real estate development for just shy of 30 years. Done a lot of multifamily planned communities. I've done very large planned communities. I've done smaller planned communities. I've done as large as 5,000-unit planned communities with town centers and commercial, almost like whole towns, down to 12 units. So I have a lot of experience in doing it. We were excited about this project. We think it's a, one, a beautiful piece of property with beautiful views. We wanted to do something that was not the same, I would say, as like a square box-type condo project that maybe was proposed in the past for this particular site. We wanted to do something that felt more like a home. So that's why we are proposing townhomes instead of a condo-type product. We aren't trying to put too much product on the property. We want to stay within the zoning limits of what we can build there. And this is what we're proposing. So if you look at...
Do you want to base it towards the public so they can see? Because we all have a copy here, so...
What we've done is, everything that we have here on the board, we had smaller versions, which we've handed out to every member of council. So what we're presenting to the public, you now have in front of you as well.
Yes.
I mean, I'll just kinda...so I think everyone has a copy of the site plan. I'm assuming everyone can look at it right now. So we were proposing 24 townhomes for the site. We tried to arrange it in a way where we've had good egress and ingress and egress out of the site. Tried to make it seem a little airy, not have them so close together. Tried to keep a good amount of green space on the site with this design. We do have to deal with some issues like CAFRA permits, and so some of the units towards the bay will be designed a little bit differently than the back units on Broadway because we have height restriction issues we have to deal with there. But for the most part, they'll all have front-loaded garages, two cars within the garage, plus one car in the driveway, so they can potentially keep three cars on their property without parking on the street. We tried to keep the entry and the exit ways wide enough so it's comfortable two-way traffic in both directions. And we, you know, we came up with multiple designs to review with you today that we thought might be appropriate for the site and would lend to a very beautiful community. And that's kind of how we looked at it. We have amenities. We have a pool on the bay. And this is a lingo, and I think that's where we are.
You intend to reconstitute the boat slips to make them available?
That is correct. Yep. We're gonna try...we're gonna attempt to reconstitute the boat slips where they currently existed. That is correct.
And you'd like to avail yourself of redevelopment process, partner with council in order to facilitate the concept that you just discussed?
That is correct. Yes. We would love the cooperation of council to work with us so we can put this redevelopment plan into place and develop the property. Absolutely.
Any questions for Mr. Wolfington?
All right.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I know you brought some additional plan sheets showing elevations of the property. Maybe we could refer to those next, and you can describe what you've designed here.
Okay. I feel like I'm talking this way and showing that. Should add too many. So, yeah, so Keith and John kind of described the fact that it's really a special site. You know, Broadway's kind of a special street, and this site has views in both directions, you know, over the channel to Ocean City and back across the meadows to the north. It's really a special site. There's nothing on the other side of Broadway going to the north, so you have full views going that way. Yeah, so it was our idea to maximize the views and the open space so that each unit could have a view of the water. And of course, we had to work with what we perceived as the CAFRA requirements, drainage requirements that the engineers gave us, and the redevelopment concept of the city. I'm just gonna flip this drawing so the public can see. This is drawing 82, and it shows an aerial photograph of the existing property. And this kind of shaded empty area indicates the townhouse arrangement to give you a sense of that. And this map clearly shows the meadows and the channel, Rainbow Channel. And we're trying to maintain the green areas that presently exist to the best we can. And then I'll just skip to describe the buildings a little bit. This is 83. And it shows the floor plans. I'm trying to be saying, we've got two cars in the garage, one outside, so we have three cars. There's a nice storage area, especially for, you know, people, boaters and people going to the beach. It's a...how would I describe it? So the grape room is one level above, and so the first level you come up to is really a bedroom level, but it has a nice porch on the looking out view. The second level is the grape room level, kitchen, dining, living. There's a deck to the back which gives a lot of the units views to the north over the meadows. They all have views to the town, and the top floor is a master suite. This is...this drawing 84, it's just an image drawing. It's not a drawing that I'll need to prepare. Just an image to get things started, to get everybody in line in the stylistic direction we're going. It's a contemporary look. It's a sharp new look, and you can see the aspects are similar in the large windows and decks and view opportunities. This is a drawing that we did generate that's still, you know, under refinement for this particular project. This would be on the inside of the project, looking out towards the channel. The garage, the bedroom level, which has a common deck, the grape room area, and the master suite at the top. I think that's it for me.
Very good. Any questions about the...
Yeah, I could ask a couple of questions, please.
Sir?
On a A4, is the upper left-hand corner, is that representing, for lack of a better term, the back of this building? The back of these buildings? A4 are just...they're not images. They're just images from... Okay. They're worldview images. You'll be in that style, so to speak, then? That kind of style, Sean. Okay. I'm just curious to see what the back of this would look like, because I think that's most of what the public will see. From the park, that's what we'll see, yeah. The...as I'm sure you're aware, that this piece of property has a history and had approval for a previous project. Part of that previous project included public access to the bed. I don't see that depicted on the...
So Mr. Barnhart can discuss that further. That is also a CAFRA requirement.
Okay.
Right.
There will be parking spaces that will be reserved for public access for individuals that want to come to the site, park, and walk along the big road.
Okay, great. And then in that site plan, you're including the piece of property that's a part of JFK Park presently?
Well, I'm not sure which piece you're looking at, Councilman, but are you referring to the former Point Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. So that is...was a street that was vacated by City Council. As I believe you and other members of the governing body are probably painfully aware.
Yes.
It was extended several times by a prior owner. There was a reversion provision in that deed which required the grantee to commence a development within a certain specified period of time. That never occurred. So that property has now reverted back to ownership of the City of Summers Point. We would like to have further discussions with the city about the conveyance of that real estate through the redevelopment process, which you're allowed to do under the statute. But for this concept, you are correct. That strip of land, we are including as part of this redevelopment project.
Okay. So that's further discussion is basically the answer to that.
I assume someone will bring that up tonight?
Sure.
We're aware of it.
Sure.
Then we'll have further discussions.
The other discussion, as I brought up, the other project, that project was developed back in, I don't know, eight or nine, 2008 or 2009, somewhere in that. And during that process, it was just simply developed and went to the planning board. Why would this version of the project, or your version of the project, need to be put into a redevelopment zone?
Because attached product is not permitted in the underlying zoning district. The density that we're establishing is consistent with the underlying zone, the existing zoning, but it does not allow for attached product. So eventually, it's our hope, this will get to a planning board's phase. But we are asking council to consider the adoption of a redevelopment plan to allow for favorable zoning so that this project can be built. And as you know, any redevelopment plan will also have to go to the planning board for a master planning consistency. So the planning board will have an opportunity to review it then. And if council acts upon this favorably and adopts a redevelopment plan, then Mr. Barnhart, Mr. Fenwick can refine these plans further, make sure they're consistent with the redevelopment plan, and we will present a application for preliminary and final major site plan approval to the planning board. So this is the first step in that process. It's a long process, but one we believe will help facilitate the very redevelopment that we're proposing do tonight.
Thank you.
May I ask a question, please?
Certainly, yes.
Is there any affordable housing in this plan that you're laying out here today?
So we, in the draft redevelopment plan that we've given to your legal counsel, we have set forth four different ways in which we will satisfy affordable housing requirements under your orders. One is the payment of an in-lug fee, and there are certain trigger points with respect to how many units are generated. We're only...we're generating six units here because there's 18 currently.
Right.
24 is proposed, so maybe through the payment of a fee. If there is a requirement to establish units, it would be two, in our estimation, 20% of six, which can then increase. And the other three options are to either provide the two units on site, to acquire another tract of real estate or existing housing stock and rehabilitate it to satisfy the affordable units of all site, or the third option is a relatively new concept in the State Care Housing Act that was adopted by legislature and signed into the governor earlier this year, which allows for accessory affordable units, in-law suites. So there will be a connected accessory unit to one of these units. That would be de-restricted for low, moderate income housing. We understand it's an affordable housing obligation resulting from this project, and it's the redevelopers' intent to fully satisfy it in a manner that's consistent with the ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just have Mr. Barnhart, just for a few questions, if you wouldn't mind, as the President. So John, you and your firm have been engaged by John and his group as the planner and engineer, correct?
That's correct.
All right. And I know we did submit some draft zoning district language for the redevelopment plan.
Yes.
Can you just describe generally whether the proposed whole standards that we're requesting as part of redevelopment plan?
Sure. So our firm has actually had the benefit of being involved in this project for many, many years. We were part of the prior development approvals. And what's been developed by Mr. Fenwick and our client with our assistance is, we think, a similar project, but a project that has some benefits to it that make it a more feasible project and allow the project to finally move forward and be a real asset to the community. In the redevelopment plan that we've drafted at this point, it really does respect your existing zoning. It just has some minor deviations, as Mr. Davis pointed out. Attached units like, such as Mr. Fenwick has designed, are not permitted use in this location. But as an example, the prior approval and your underlying zoning permits a maximum of 24 units on the site. That is the proposed density. The setbacks are very similar. The coverage that is being proposed, impervious coverage, has to meet the DEP requirements in order for us to get a CAFRA permit. It's 60%. So we're still gonna have 40% open space and landscaping on the site. All very similar characteristics to the prior approval and your existing zoning. It's just, this redevelopment plan really addresses the type and style of unit, the attached nature of the unit, and allowing the site to be laid out in a manner that makes it, we think, a more beautiful and more feasible project.
Questions about the bulk standards we're requesting. I primarily wanted you to understand that the density we're proposing, it is consistent with your current orders.
Oh, and just to answer Mr. McWiggin's question with regard to public access, there's a public access policy in the DEP regulations, as I'm sure you know. We have to meet those standards. The current plan doesn't...the concept doesn't specifically go into any of those details, but it is something we will have to address. We had to address it the first time around, and the policy is essentially the same now that it was, you know, 15 years ago. So we still have to meet all those standards.
We have some flexibility with respect to that. If we still have some suggestions as to how to provide that public access, assuming it can be accommodated from a site plan layout, we're happy to have discussion.
Thank you. Just one quick question that I should have brought this up while Steve was up there, but going back to the boat slips that were mentioned, the boat slips are going to be connected or a part of a unit? So each unit would get a boat slip, or...
It's...yeah, I was just gonna...it's not likely that we're gonna be able to get an approval for enough slips for every unit to have a boat slip.
Right.
But the slips are intended to go with the unit. So they're probably...I don't know the plan of our client, but maybe a first-come, first-served basis type of thing, but the slips are going with the unit. They're not a separate entity or...
Right. So the...whatever the deed, I don't know the legal language for it, but it'll be connected to that deed. It'll be deeded to a unit.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Can we provide for that in the redevelopers' agreement? We get to that stage to make sure that that is indeed the case, that this is...
So no one else could buy a boat slip there, I think?
So no one else, no one else could buy a boat slip there, I think?
Correct.
They have to be a unit owner. But a unit owner could sell it to a different unit owner, as long as they're in the same development, or?
Yeah, I think the intent is to make sure that these slips are dedicated to those who reside in the community.
Right, right.
So we can, we'll have a homeowners association ultimately for this agreement.
Right.
And we can provide that there can be no outsales to third parties not residing in their unit.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
Keith, I got a quick one. What's your target number for market price of these units?
So we're hoping sales north of $1 million. All is going to depend on market conditions when we get through DEP and hopefully have the support of the governing body and what the market bears in the future, but that's our difficult goal, to receive price forms.
Thank you.
In your packet, everyone has a copy of the proposed redevelopment agreement, I believe, and so you have time to review that.
I don't have that.
You don't have it?
No.
Oh. I do it. I have it right here.
I'm sorry, I started with Councilman Hardey and came down with a little...
Here.
You can have mine.
You don't have this?
Oh, this is...
Okay, I'll make sure everybody has it, so you can redo it.
We'll submit, I'll send you additional copies. Make sure we stick your hand out.
Yes, I have it. We'll make sure everybody gets them. Okay, thank you.
So thank you for listening to us, and appreciate the time. It's our hope that at upcoming meetings, we can at least have a membrane of understanding and escrow agreement approved, and we can work with your professionals on the finer points of this concept. And in a position shortly to hopefully introduce a redevelopment plan.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
We're up to me already.
Yes, we are.
Okay, as we all know, we just had good old days last Saturday. It was a fantastic day. It was probably the largest crowd I've seen in such a long time, between the great music, dollar burgers, dollar hot dogs. Place was packed. It was just great to see all our friends and neighbors come out after the summer, when things calmed down, and it was, it was a wonderful day. And I want to thank everyone on the committee for all their hard work, and it was a wonderful day. Yesterday, we had our 9/11 ceremony. We had it at 5:30, as opposed to 8:30 in the morning, 5:30 at night, and we had a tremendous crowd there. And I just want to take the time to thank firefighter Mike Sweeney, who organized this thing. He did a fantastic job, as well as our police, you know, all the volunteer firemen, EMS, and our Legion riders. It worked out perfect. Once again, one of the largest crowds I've seen that was able to make it to a 9/11 ceremony, so it was great. Shore Medical is doing their free flu shot clinic. It's going to go Saturday to 14th, 8 to 12. That's this Saturday, and it's at 649 Shore Road. It's the surgical building. It's right there on New York Avenue. Phone number is 609-364-6200, if you want to make an appointment, or you can just walk right in, no problem. And if you can't make that one, there's another one going to be on October 12th. Same place, 8 to 12, same time. September 20th, we have our POW MIA ceremony at Patriots Park at 7 o'clock. Hopefully, everyone can make it, all is invited. And lastly, this Saturday, from 10 to 4, we have Art in the Park. It's a great event. Hopefully, everyone can get down there and take a look. There's so much talent that's out there, local talent, that you'd be, really be surprised. So hopefully, I can see everyone down there. And I think that is all I have.
Do your proclamations?
I could do that on the proclamations. Yeah, I could do that, too. So I have a proclamation. It's proclamation number 10, and it is for congratulating Ryan Bender for receiving his Eagle Scout Award. And what happens is, by the time this is brought to my attention, he is already leaving for college. So the day before he left for college, I did the proclamation, council president, myself, read it, presented it to him, but I did tell him that I would read that aloud here, and I would like to do that now, where it says, "Congratulating Ryan Bender for receiving the Eagle Scout Award. Whereas Ryan Bender was born and raised in Summers Point, attended Summers Point Schools. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America is a vital force in the development of our youth through its many programs, which encourages the ability of its members to do things for themselves and especially for others. Whereas some of the major objectives of the scouting program are to develop citizenship, merit badges, and participate in community service projects. Where Ryan Bender is a member of Troop 55 and has not only proven himself to be an outstanding member of the Boy Scouts of America, but has attained the highest honor bestowed on a scout, the Eagle Scout Award. Whereas the Eagle Scout Award is a distinction that will follow him throughout his life, and the commitment that he has shown will be a beacon to others of leadership quality and commitment. Now therefore, I, Dennis Tapp, Mayor of the City of Summers Point, wish to congratulate Ryan Bender for his dedication and hard work to achieve the level of Eagle Scout, and to thank him for being a positive role model and an inspiration to the youth of our community." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frost?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
Just that we have a number of projects that will be going to bid soon and becoming in front of City Council for approval for awarding contracts.
Great. Does anyone have any committee reports? I would like to give a steering committee report really quick. Just so everyone knows the, how busy the steering committee, how hard, how much they do, I just wanted to go through this real quick to tell you what they're working on There's the master plan, which we did have a public session, and we'll be having more public sessions and more presentations on the master plan to get everyone's suggestions and ideas. Last public meeting was very informative, and we appreciated everybody's input. The NRTC plan, which is the Neighborhood Revitalization Tax Credit Funds that we've been approved for, we're not, we don't know the amount, but we have to come up with a plan for that. So we're putting together a coalition of residents, business owners, in the specific area that those funds can be used for, to try and come up with a plan for that to submit so we can hopefully... My understanding is it's up to possibly $1 million annually, and it, but it is for a specific neighborhood. So we did talk about that in the master plan meeting as well. They're working on the Safe Roads to School Grant for $771 that we are going to receive, $771,000.
Big difference there.
Big difference. That's why we're, we're...
Thank you. Thank you for that. That is for improvements to Jordan Road School, Dolls Avenue, or around Jordan Road School, Dolls Avenue School, including curb extensions, rapid flashing lights at the inner, beacons at the intersection, sidewalks, curb improvements, and radar feedback signs in those areas. The MPP grant that we receive every year, we were approved for that for six years. I think we're in our third year of that. That's $125,000 a year, and we're closing out the grant for 2023, and that was used for wayfinding signs that you're going to see going up very soon. There's 15 wayfinding signs that you'll see throughout the town on Bay Avenue, Shore Road, Maze Lanning Road, all directional to all of our sites. We also used some of the funds for our marketing, for our PR company, for our events, for our farmer's market, and so we're closing that out for 2023. And let's see what else. We have several other grants that our engineers work and our planner is working on. We have $861,000 for Shore Road, for Safe Streets to Transit Grant, and that's for Shore Road improvements. We're working with the county on those, and I believe the bids are going out. Did they go out already?
I was just waiting for approval from the county, but I talked to them today, and they're expecting to have comments very soon, so...
Great, so you'll see those improvements hopefully by the spring. We have another DOT municipal aid grant for Ocean Avenue to the bike path to Shore Road, and the bids are out for that? Where are you at them?
Just waiting for the state to approve them, but that should be probably next week also, so...
Could you explain the dredging permit, what we're waiting for there, the bayfront?
We submitted, in order to get the dredging permit, we have to do sediment samples, and we have to do a plan to DP to, they have to approve where we're going to get the locations of the samples. So we submitted that, and we're just waiting here back, so we can actually do the testing.
Okay, thank you. We're also, our engineer has been working to get a grant to build a, it's called Jack's Law. They build all-inclusive playgrounds. So we're working on the plan for that. I know he surveyed the, it will be at Kennedy Park where that playground is. Great program. We're hoping we can qualify for that. I think that's, this, always applying for different grants. There's quite a few of them that our planner, Jim Metalla, brings to us, and we try and get every single one that we can, so we don't have to use tax dollars for all of these improvements. So that's all I have. Anybody have any committee reports at all? No? Could I have a motion to approve the minutes from August 8, 2024, regular meeting, and also the executive session on August 8, 2024, as to content only?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Could I have a motion to open for public comment on resolutions only?
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment on resolutions only.
Yes, good evening, everybody. John Helbig, 106 East Stars Avenue. I just had a couple of questions on Resolution 216 and 219, specifically Resolution 219. Who's the beneficiary of the tax exemption? Is that the developer or the folks that are going to live in those homes?
The homeowner, the homeowner.
Homeowners?
Yes, whoever's purchasing, yes.
Okay. Is this the, is this the, under the ordinance that we're thinking about sunsetting at the end of the year, this?
Yes.
Okay. I guess my concern is that, and I can certainly understand the benefits of giving tax incentives like this to incentivize development, bring development into the community. Sure.
This is on for sure. The way you developed an agreement that we entered into back in 2019?
19 or 20, or?
2019.
Okay. So you're locked in, basically?
I didn't mean to steal your thunder, but I understand.
Not at all. Sure, okay, so that's different from Resolution 2016, which is just for an individual. I guess my concern would be, in that case, that we're not setting a precedent here by approving every one of these that comes through in this process. We have to be concerned not just about incentivizing development in the community, but protecting the long-term fiscal health of the town. We don't need to be giving everybody a tax break, okay? So that's my concern. Basically, when these homes are occupied, when a business is occupied, they don't get 25% of the municipal services. We start picking up the trash right away. We provide police, fire, sanitary sewer, you know, we're providing all of the services. Is that, is that benefit, is that just the local purpose tax, or is that across the board? Is that all? Do you get a benefit from all the taxes, or is it just our local purpose tax?
It's just municipal, right?
So, so these folks could be putting kids in the school, and the school, school's not getting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there was a reason why this was enacted, and that was just before in 2015.
Right.
We had 230...
Sure, no, I understand that, Tom. No, I get it, I get it. Different time now, though.
Yeah?
Sure.
Thanks.
Patricia Pearson, 587 Marks Road, Summers Point. I know Mr. Garrity, and I'm happy that he's a councilman. He can do it with God's love. I'd like to know how, how you came across putting him in for these two and a half months, when you did have another candidate, and you did, I read the Sentinel Ledger, I read it from top to bottom, and the other candidate was qualified to maybe be a councilman. In other words, you didn't give anybody a chance. And I want to know who voted and how you thought about it, and what may come to this decision?
Do you want to explain that, or you want me? Yes, please.
I screwed up. We didn't get it from the council, the nominees, and it was won.
I wasn't talking about that.
No, but that's just the procedure. You want me to answer that, or do you want to?
No, I want you to answer.
Okay, I'll answer that. We had 30 days from the day of effective resignation to appoint one of the committees. We did not meet until tonight, the 31st day, by my counting. So he goes back to the municipal committee of the party that had put Mr. Carey into office, which is the Republican Party, and the Republican Committee. Then, at this point, without a council meeting, they choose to put him in. So this isn't the council's decision, this is the Republican Committee's decision.
All right, that's an honest answer.
By law, they say he's it, he's here.
All right, that's an honest answer, and I appreciate that. But it's not a great answer, but it's an honest answer.
It's the best answer I can do.
I know, I know. Now, how about the question right before me? You screwed up again.
Well, I...
About the taxes in 2019. How much screw-up? This is not supposed to be like this.
I wasn't here in 2019.
That was a good answer. I was here, I remember it.
So then you let it happen.
I didn't let it happen. I'm just saying, the public has to start watching this council, because let me tell you, screw up, screw up, what are we doing?
Market was different in 2019.
Okay.
And we're talking about a development that's bringing us...
Talking about the houses were...
Right, there were five Darleks houses on that property.
Come on, everything's not negative here.
Give away, give away, give away.
We didn't give anything away.
Raise the taxes, raise the taxes.
We didn't give anything away. We did not give one thing away. We improved the property immensely. We have 12 new ratables that we didn't... We have 12 new ratables that we didn't have before, beautiful homes, and we didn't give anything away. The public has a right to get up and talk to. Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Public has a right, the public has a right.
Counselor, good evening. John Sidakakis, Summers Point Diner. Couple of questions. 209, with the Bayport Motel against the city itself, are you allowed to say why this lawsuit's happening, or whether it is?
I don't believe we're allowed to discuss it until we're in executive session.
Okay. I'd just like to put on record that if it has something to do with the easement that they were denied, please keep in mind, we are also a part of that easement as well with that state project. Many of yous may not know that, but being a part of that discussion from Jump Street eons ago, we share that with them, so I just wanted to put on record that if they get it, we're also on that docket as well, too, of receiving it as well, if we ever do decide to sell, if and when. Also, too, last time I was here, talking about McWiggin over there being out of line at the end of '23, beings that, who's the gentleman retiring?
Mr. McCary.
McCary, beings that he was in that meeting that he asked for at my place, McCary was there, so is he still on the hook as a witness, lack of terminology, and as, I'm not an attorney, but him not being here, is he still a part of this whole loop, even though he's going to Florida legally?
That was very discommoded, I guess.
All right, so long as, all right, so long as short of it, well, I don't know if you were here or not, the last time I was here.
I didn't know the mistake, I guess.
No. So, at the end of, at the end of last year in September, McWiggin asked to meet at my restaurant with Mr. McCary, we had a meeting.
That's Mr. McWiggin, so you can.
No, he doesn't get any respect.
That's all right.
He doesn't get respect. So him and Mr. McCary were there, had the meeting, went the way it went, but now that Mr. McCary's retiring, is he still on the hook for being at that meeting that?
I think, is that a question for your attorney, I would think.
Just a second.
There's a sting in the hook. Okay, that'll be my response, I don't really understand what you mean by that, so I don't.
Well, being that he's not a councilman anymore, going forward, beings that he was a councilman at that time, is he still under some sort of council oath that down the line that, you know, he can?
That is a question I really can't answer.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, I, I.
He can, he can, I mean, I'm not gonna, yeah.
That's okay, I'm, I just, I really can't answer that, but I'm not really sure what it means, and I don't know if I'd have a, just be appropriate, you know, start from the bottom.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to close, please?
I'll make that motion to close. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now closed for public comment. Resolution number 205.
Resolution number 205 of 2024, authorizing lease with Atlantic County Library.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
May I make a comment here?
Yes, please.
You know, the library is owned by the, you know, the city, it is a city property, and one of the things, you know, I'd like to see a council in the future, maybe have a subcommittee get together to look at all of the properties here in town that are owned by the city, to see what we can do to enhance that, bring it up to, you know, better standards, wherever, so I know this, being the library, and it is, like I said, a city-owned property, I really think that's something that council should look at down the road, is maybe, you know, a subcommittee to look at that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman, what you're asking, basically asking for is a subcommittee to look at all of our buildings, do an assessment of those buildings, and to find out what we need to do in the future, not only that building, but this building, the senior building, and any building, any property that the city has, is that correct?
That's exactly right, much as we have a road plan, I'd like to have a building and grounds plan going forward, and, you know, to meet the residents' needs. See what we can do, is there funding, is there not funding, do we have to look at grants? You know, we're not going to be able to do everything, I realize that, but it would be nice to know exactly what we have.
I can certainly support that, that concept, I think that, just speaking on this building alone, we've been, we've been beating this up and kicking this down the road for, for several years, and I think that maybe it's time to have a committee that's going to address all the buildings, including this building. Thank you.
I agree, we can work that, work that out. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 205 is adopted. Number 207?
Resolution number 207 of 2024, authorizing purchase on state contract for two new radios for the Summers Point Police Department.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 207 is adopted. Number 208, please.
Resolution number 208 of 2024, a resolution appointing Adam Barker Esquire as the municipal prosecutor for the City of Summers Point pursuant to NJSA 2B:12-27.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
Yes, counsel, I thought when we made appointments of this nature, we would have resumes of these people to know what their qualifications were, and the second question is, does the, the necessary department heads approve of this appointment?
Yeah.
I haven't heard anything.
Mr. Barker has been our conflict prosecutor.
Okay.
He's sepped in a couple of times this year, and it's also, he is also the chief of police, and Mr. Smith have also approved this assignment.
No, I'm, I'm not pointing, I'm not pointing fingers, but what, I, I thought the policy was that anytime we made a permanent appointment, and this would be a permanent appointment, that the council would get a copy of the resolution, or at least some information associated with the approval of the necessary staff in the city.
Oh, it's attached.
It is attached? I didn't get a copy of it.
I saw it yesterday.
That's it right there.
Okay, all right, I apologize. I apologize, no, of course not, okay, you never do.
You're off the hook on that one.
I, I do apologize, I got this, this packet late, okay, my own fault, I screwed up, okay?
He's, he's, he's currently one of the prosecutors of the county municipal.
Okay. I do apologize, I didn't see the, the resume.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 208 is adopted. Number 209?
Resolution number 209 of 2024, authorizing executive session, advice of council and attorney-client privileged communication regarding the status of litigation involving the city entitled Bay Point Motel, Inc. versus City of Summers Point, having a docket number
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 209 is adopted. We'll be going into executive session at the end of the meeting in the interest of everyone's time. I don't believe we will be taking any action after, but there's always a possibility, and anyone's welcome to wait in the lobby until we're done, and we will come out and get you. Resolution number 210, please.
Resolution number 210 of 2024, authorizing executive session, advice of council and attorney-client privileged communication regarding the status of litigation involving the city's planning board entitled GMH Restaurant Holdings, LLC, GMH Restaurant Enterprises, Gary M. Holloway, versus the City of Summers Point, having a docket number of ATL-C-66-24.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 210 is adopted. Number 213?
Resolution number 213 of 2024, authorizing advertising bids for 2024 road program Phase One, Balla Drive.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 213 is adopted. Number 214?
Resolution number 214 of 2024, hiring school crossing guards.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution, number was out, I turned the page, number 214 is adopted. Number 215?
Resolution number 215 of 2024, authorizing executive session, advice of council and attorney-client communication regarding the status of litigation involving the city and its zoning board entitled Garden State Outdoor, LLC versus City of Summers Point, City of Summers Point Zoning Board, having a docket number of ATL-L-143-23.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Resolution number 215 is adopted. Number 216, please.
Resolution number 216 of 2024, approval of short-term tax exemption application, 800 Second Street.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it, then.
Any comments?
Madam President?
Yes.
I don't know, the title of tax exemption, it's more of an abatement.
Abatement, yes.
I don't, I don't want the public to get the wrong idea here, just.
Seventy percent, seventy-five percent.
Right, right, so after five years, they're paying their full taxes, and this particular application is done under that ordinance that was put in place back then to spur development when we needed it, and, and it will, it is scheduled to sunset at the end of this year, and it doesn't seem like there's a will to reinvigorate that. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 216 is adopted. Number 217?
Resolution number 217 of 2024, authorizing advertisement of RFP for reinforcement of hockey board system and related playing surface in Summers Point.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll gladly make that motion.
Second.
Any comments? This has been a long-awaited project, we are glad to get this one started. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 217 is adopted. Number 219?
Resolution number 219 of 2024, approval of short-term tax exemption application for Sunset Avenue Redevelopment, LLC.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 219 is adopted. Number 220?
Resolution number 220 of 2024, extending contract for sanitary sewer emergency repairs and miscellaneous maintenance.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number 220 is adopted. May I have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is adopted. Anyone have any old business to discuss?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr.?
I just have something for Jason. Jason, the matter we discussed about Mr. McCary's pay, you'll take care of that tomorrow morning.
Yes, sir.
All right, and inform the council president of what it is.
He already has.
Oh, he has? Okay, good, yeah.
Under new business, we need approval for a social affair permit for the Rotary Club of Summers Point for an event on October 9, 2024, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at 646 Bay Avenue. And I'm assuming all their paperwork is in? Everyone okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Don't we have to do that one?
We did it, didn't we?
I thought all we did was just wait the 48-hour, we voted, did we vote on?
Yeah, we did.
We voted on that resolution? We did, okay.
Yeah, that's all right, I didn't see a resume either.
Is he falling asleep over there, yes?
I have to kick you once in a while, or what?
Just checking.
That's right.
I know that's probably the most important one.
It is pretty important, yes. Approval for a wa, waffle, yeah, wave raffle fee for VFW Post 2189. Everyone's okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Approval for a social affair permit for St. Joseph's Church for Fall Fest event September 27, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at 11 Harbor Lane. And none of these will be on here if the paperwork wasn't all in, in order.
I'll make a motion for all three.
Okay, good, thank you. Also, we need a second, please.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all of our social affair permits are approved. And also, for a road closure application for Mission Point Church on October 9, from 3:00 to 9:00.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Would I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. In your packet tonight is some, your list of committee assignments, the only one that's changed so far is Mr. Habercorn is being added to the personnel committee, it's one that we needed to fill right away, the rest of Mr. McCary's committee is, commitments will be discussed with Mr. Garrity, and we'll figure all that out as well.
Council President, I only have one change, I'd like my name spelled correctly, please.
Uh-oh, that was me, my mistake, sorry.
Really picky there, aren't you?
Yeah, just, just a little bit.
Okay, sorry about that.
Council President, before we get off to new business, I'd like to bring something up. To be honest with you, I know this new business or old business, but what I'm seeing is a continuous amount of signs being put on stop sign posts and put in the ground all over town, such as we buy houses, yard sales, roofing signs, things of that nature. Is there anything that we can do to, to clean those up, okay? Can Public Works take it? They're unauthorized signs, they're unauthorized to advertise.
I have spoken to Public Works, and they do go around.
I don't know when they do it. What I would, what I would like to see is that when they, when they take them down, we accumulate them, give me a call. I'd like to see all these signs that are being taken down, because either that, or they're putting them up faster than we can take them down. The other issue I have, of course, is the yard sale signs. There's a requirement for the, the person having yard sale to take a permit out, I don't think they're taking them out, they're certainly not taking them down, and I think we can, I think we have the ability to, to find them, okay, through, through our, our city statutes, okay, and I think it's about time, if somebody wants to have a yard sale, legal or illegally, then the least they could do is have the common courtesy to take the signs down. So if we, if we have to find them, or do whatever we have to do, I think we should do that, because they truly, more even so than the ones that I mentioned, trash up the city.
But we could also, can we also do the same thing for the one, for the other signs? I mean, they're not legal signs, so we could at least notice them, or can we?
If I'm not mistaken, I believe in the past that if someone has their name on the sign with a phone number, that our code enforcement officer can actually go after them and cite them personally. And I did meet with Guy Martin today as we were going around town, raising all the flags from half-mast, and he had a lot of the And, uh, he had a lot of the signs that he was just picking up today in the back of his pickup, I didn't notice.
They pick them up all the time, but they go up just as fast.
And they do go up. And I can reach out to, um, our code enforcement officer, uh, also on that.
Okay.
And make sure that whoever's putting them up, you know, it's an advertisement of a business or something, we can actually go after them, because the signs are illegally put, you know, out there and the public run away.
Right, okay, I, I just...
Take care of that tomorrow.
I just think that, and then the yard sale ones, I think the people who post yard sales, they should, uh, if they had the yard sale, they should, they should pay for the permit, okay? Even if they, if they haven't, okay? And there should be a potential fine associated with it, okay? We're, we're talking about revenue for the city, and yet we allow people to, we don't intentionally allow people to do this, but it's something I think we need to, to crack down on.
Yes, absolutely. Anyone else have any new business to discuss?
Uh, Madam President?
Yes.
I have a couple items. Uh, number one is, back at the end of the, or the beginning of the summer, we had some residents approach, me and the mayor, when we were out and about. And, uh, the intersections on Dawes and Myron are becoming speedways heading between Shore Road and Bethel. Uh, some of the people had requested a traffic study, some had requested that a four-way stop be put in there. It was the end of the school year, so that in the summertime, it slowed down. Uh, school was back in session. I went through both of those intersections today. There are people coming down those streets at a high rate of speed. So I would like the mayor to talk to the chief about both of those intersections and see if we can come up with a solution to slow them down there. Absolutely.
Dawes and Myron from...
My, uh, right on Montgomery, right on Montgomery at Dawes and Myron seems to be the fastest way. When they hit the stop signs at the bike path, and then it's a drag strip to Bethel Road.
It's a Bethel Road, okay.
Yeah, I was sitting at the stop sign in the car, and it went by the intersection, had to be doing 50. You know, residential area, it's 25 mile an hour, so if they could take a look at that, you know, so... And another thing that I encountered today was an electric bicycle coming down the bike path at a high rate of speed and blowing right through the intersection. I think we need to take a look at these electric bikes. Uh, most of the people that have electric bikes stay in the street. They're not supposed to be on the bike path, but I don't know whether there's any signage on the bike path.
Well, aside from no motor vehicle.
Change the ordinance, 'cause...
They are not defined as a motor vehicle.
Okay, I don't know why, because I looked up the brand that the guy was on, and it does 28 miles an hour.
Do anything.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're legislators.
Yeah, I mean, some of these kids that are, that are running on, it's like somebody's gonna have an accident. And, you know, I know I was a kid, and I was one of the worst offenders on this stuff. Oh, that's funny, isn't it, Gary? You know? Gary gave me my first moving violation. Probably saved my life.
Did you a favor, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, bet you never thought you'd see me here, huh?
So we need an ordinance for electric vehicles on public, on, uh, pri, city property, right?
Yeah.
Okay, bike path is...
Now, I, I, taking up on what you said, electric, the electric bikes are just dangerous, period, okay? Uh, I don't know, I, I don't think there's a real solution to that. But my understanding is, we just had a, uh, a vehicle, an electric bike accident somewhere here in town. And, uh, two, two children, or two girls that were on the bike were injured. And I just, I don't know, maybe we should have some type of safety course given by the police department or whomever to try to, to try to make you aware of what's going on. Uh, it's something we can look at down the road. It doesn't have to be tomorrow or anything of that nature. But, you know, they, they are a danger. They're not any danger on the bike path, but they're just a danger in, in, in general. I know I've come pretty close on Groveland Avenue on my way home, people crossing from Jordan over to Southview Drive, and they just go right through, right through the stop sign, and, you know, it's, it's dangerous. And I think we need to educate the people that are riding these bikes, the dangers associated with it, and the fact that they should abide by the law.
There's the New Jersey helmet law, too, Howard.
The New Jersey what?
Helmet law, where they should be wearing helmets on bikes.
Why, the, the incident I'm talking about said, that happened this afternoon is the, uh, I have to assume that they didn't have helmets on, because one of them had a minor head injury.
And I just have two more items, real quick. First one is Mr. Schneider. You know what I'm gonna say, right? The sign on Bethel Road.
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. And, uh, just one comment, uh, with the boat ramps. Uh, we charge $150 seasonal fee, and that fee goes to everyone that uses the boat ramps. Uh, I think someone that pays $8,000 plus in taxes here in Summers Point maybe should cut a break on them. I know some of the other communities do that. If you're a resident, I mean, their tax money is going to pay for those ramps and everything. And just something for council to consider.
I, I have had that conversation, not only with Jason, but Madam President, that looking at what those rates are, they should probably be adjusted. And the proper time to do that would be January 1st.
Right.
Council wishes to do that. But...
That's all I have.
We recognize that, and saw that was an issue.
And that's not, that's not discriminatory to have rates for residents versus non-residents, right?
Well, we have rates for veterans and seniors.
I'm asking our attorney.
I'll look into it.
Okay, thank you. I just don't want to pass regulations that are not proper, that's all.
Yeah, I know other communities do it.
Doesn't mean illegal.
Welcome back.
Okay.
It's only, it's only illegal when you get caught.
Well...
Oh, jeez.
Uh, come on. Welcome, welcome to council. Mr. Garrity, I appreciate your humor.
Retired. Thankfully retired, Captain Gray. Enjoying his retirement. Serve the city well.
Yes.
Moving right on.
Okay, um, let's move on to discussion of the bills, Mr. Frost. Could I have a motion to open for public comment, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for public comment.
John Helbig again, 106 East Dawes Avenue. I had a lot of comments about the redevelopment project that Mr. Davis brought here tonight. I have concerns about redevelopment in general, 'cause I don't think it's transparent. I think council makes a lot of decisions, perhaps in the best interest of the town. But, um, that's just my personal opinion. I have friends that live in those apartment complexes. I've been told that they've been given eviction notices to be out of there by 12:31, by December 31st. Given the paucity of, of affordable housing in our area, I think that's, I think that's gonna be a, a real hardship on folks who have lived there for a long time. These guys don't even have plans done yet. They have to get a CAFRA permit, which is nine to 12 months minimum. So they're, they're not looking to break ground for 18 to 24 months minimum by the time they have all their DEP permits. I just don't see why they're putting our residents in a situation where they have to be out in three months. So I would hope our redevelopment committee uses whatever leverage they have to extend that, to give people more time.
That's not the developers that, they, they don't own the property yet, so...
I'm sorry?
These developers don't own the property yet. They have not settled on the property yet.
So who's telling the people they have to be out?
The owner of the property.
Well, he wouldn't be doing that unless these guys were putting pressure on them.
We don't know that.
Wow, we don't, yeah, we don't know.
They're our residents, I think we should care about them. The other thing is, uh, public access, um, when we, I, I appreciate Councilwoman McGuigan talking about that. They, this never works on, on private property. Ultimately, it gets kind of lost in, in the weeds. I would, uh, I've done projects where communities can get monetary contributions for public access in lieu of doing it on private property. I think that's a better way to go. I hope we're not going to include any type of tax deferral or reduction for our million-dollar townhouses here. They don't clearly need it. I hope during this redevelopment process, there's transparency. I hope there's public meetings. As Mr. Davis indicated, they go to the planning board. By the time these projects get to the planning board, all the important decisions have already been made by city council. Not to disparage the planning board, but all, all the big decisions have been made already. Affordable housing, I don't know how that's gonna work on a site like this. I think they should look at a separate property and help us meet our affordable housing component. That's all I got, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is George Kariannis. I'm from Ted Sezenacourt Upper Township, Seaville. I'm here tonight representing the Summers Point Futsal Group, which is a bunch of locals that play pickup soccer at the Summers Point Auxiliary Field. They are a group of men comprised of more than 80% Summers Point residents, and have been playing on the field for over six years, usually Monday and Thursday night from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. They are not an organized league, and they do not collect any money. They're just a group of guys who just want to play soccer on their nights off. Six years ago, we were told that we need to get a permit and purchase insurance at our own expense to cover our players, so they could play pickup soccer. So for six years, we have paid the permit fee, which was $500 twice a year, along with $400 for insurance to cover for any injuries at our own expense. Through the years, we paid these fees, which totaled $8,400. We've also paid $1,800 out of pocket for an electrician to install a timer that we paid for and donated to the city for lights at the auxiliary field that would go off when we were finished playing, to save the city some money, so they wouldn't have to pay for lights all night long. At a recent rec advisory board meeting, we were there trying to update our permit. The board informed us that they have new fees for the fields, and they have increased to $200 for a three-hour block. So now that would cost us about $400 a week. This costs, this would cost us approximately $10,400 a year, just to play pickup soccer in your town. Now, it used to cost us $1,000. Now they're proposing that it would cost us $10,400. That's a huge increase, and we understand expenses go up. We totally understand that. But we feel this is too much of an increase for a bunch of local guys and residents to play pickup soccer. The board stated, they recently modeled this fee from a neighboring town, and they didn't know how much to increase their fees. And in our opinion, they did not take in consideration that, they did not take in consideration what to do with the local groups of residents who use the fields. I understand field and facilities need a constant upgrade. I personally have been involved in sports for many years. I've sat in on rec advisory board meetings as a coach, board member, and a president of a youth organizations in Upper Township. Our group uses the field at night when no one else is using it. And we are paying a fee to the city for using this field. The city is collecting a fee from us that can be used to help offset costs for maintenance and upgrades. If we are forced to pay this high fee, we will have to find, we will, we will find another town to play in. This costs, this could cost the city some money, because they will no longer be collecting money from a group of people to play soccer on a field that nobody's using. So I come here tonight to make a plea to this committee to please reconsider these new fields for already established organizations within Summers Point. We are an established organization that has been playing, that has been paying year after year to play soccer on a less-than-regulation dirt field at the auxiliary, auxiliary park. We've never complained about the conditions of the field, nor have you ever received one complaint about our group. And we've never had any complaints on how we treat your fields. This new fee that has been established should be for for-profit organizations that come into your town to try to make money at, off of using your fields, training different groups. That's not us. We don't collect any fees. We're just trying to play soccer and have fun. You know, um, please consider our plea for help. We're local residents, and we just want a place to play soccer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions or anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to close?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, could I have a motion to, um, pay the bills, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Frost can pay the bills. Any further comments from the governing body? Hearing none, uh, we will adjourn into executive session. Five-minute recess.